Good evening, everybody. It's Wednesday, October 17th, about 7:15. We apologize for the late start. We had an executive session of the school committee prior to this regularly scheduled meeting. We will begin the evening with public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Dr. Rubenovich.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Swett. On Friday, October 12th, 2012, at approximately 9:20 in the morning-
One second, please.
Can you just restate in a few minutes? We weren't live.
You want me to start over?
If you want to let everybody know.
No, no problem. Good evening, everybody. It's Wednesday, October 17th, about 7:15. We're delayed starting due to an executive-
Deja vu.
Due to an executive session. We'll begin the evening with public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Dr. Rubenovich.
Thank you, Chairman Swett. On Friday, October 12th, the Wareham Police Department conducted a safety drill at Wareham High School. Police drug dogs were used in the drill and were escorted by Wareham High School administrators. The purpose of the drill was to ensure a safe learning environment existed for our students. During the drill, every room at Wareham High School was searched, as well as every car parked in the school grounds. Principal Palladino is very happy to report that no drugs were found and the drill concluded at approximately 10:00 a.m.
So you may be surprised to know that a local publication took that very good story and inserted the fact that there was no, there was evidence of drugs but not found because the dogs apparently got excited. Now, what's interesting about that-
Couldn't look for them.
Right. Here's what's really interesting about that story. This month, the Supreme Court is going to be addressing that very issue of to what extent the excitement of a dog in being used to search an apartment or stand on the porch of someone's home is a violation of privacy rights. And what's interesting is the person who wrote this article in the New York Times pointed out that he was once searched going into the Supreme Court and the dog got really excited about his car. And when they opened the trunk, he quickly pulled out a tennis ball and that was the end of his excitement. So, dogs are not infallible.
Thank you.
A certain member of the audience is looking very confused, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Parents who attended last Thursday's PM2 open house were very pleased to have an opportunity to meet their child's teachers and be able to speak with the job coach. The PM1 students, which meet from 3:30 to 5:30, who are also attending PM2, are now served a box lunch. So we have some students that go to PM1 from 3:30 to 5:30. They have a box lunch and then they come to our PM2 program in between the sessions. The PM1 session is for both students who are doing credit recovery and taking online courses with E2020. So, what Kathy doesn't mention, we also now have a bus that takes approximately eight students home from the PM2 program. These are students that had difficulty getting to the program. So, we have transportation as well.
Where do the funds for the lunch and the bus come from?
The lunch comes from the Food Services Department because these are regular students and therefore they, if they have free reduced lunch or they pay for it. So, and transportation comes from our Transportation Department because it is a regular back-and-forth school. It is a-
Okay.
I hope everybody got their invitation to the recognition of the new playground and the new sign at East Wareham Early Childhood Center. That is Monday, October 22nd, from 9:30 to 10:30 in the morning. And Mary Morgan, who's the Early Childhood Coordinator, would like an RSVP if you're planning on attending.
Did you get it?
I just got an input.
Oh, you just got it.
From Dicas, Mrs. Panerisi let me know, and this was covered in the local press, that one of our service people came to surprise one of the students, Janelle Westgate. Her brother came home from the armed services and surprised her, and that was a very nice thing that happened there. And they have a family breakfast on October 25th of pancakes, et cetera. Also, there is a, an annual, on the 26th, I believe, is their annual Character Costume Day. Excuse me. That is on the 31st. So, that might be entertaining to go by and see all the staff dressed up. That's all I have, for goodness. Thank you.
Anybody else with good news? Mike?
Yes, I attended the Board of Selectmen meeting this past Tuesday, and I hung out for a little while. And during citizens' participation, the high school kids that run the petition were there for the gym roof. And they gave a great presentation. Chairman Holmes was very accommodating for them. And the good news is everybody in that packed room clapped when they were done. So.
It's great for them. Anybody else? Cliff?
We're going to have a regularly scheduled night game on Friday?
Cliff, can you talk to your microphone, please?
A regularly scheduled night game on Friday, so that's going to be kind of, I guess the mosquito scare is over.
It's a little cold, I guess.
Yeah, but.
Excellent. And, and we're undefeated.
No, we have one less.
No, we have one less.
Non-leaked, though. We're undefeated in the league.
Yes, correct. Yes. Rhonda?
So, today I attended the minor school council where there was a presentation on beyond school time. Bob, correct me if anything I say tonight is wrong, but I wanted to make sure that I got the information out there. There's been some great work being done with beyond school time. One of them being that there is now an office that is open in the middle school. If, that is all about beyond school time. They have open hours on Mondays and Wednesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and Tuesdays and Thursdays from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. What's great about this office is that it's not only coordinating all of the beyond school time activities, but it's also a resource center that's very child-friendly, that parents can show up to be able to use the computers if they're looking for job searching or if they need to apply for WIC, as well as they're going to be holding classes there, what they're calling a parent cafe. Will they be doing reading and crafts and different seminars that are going on? It's, like I said, at the middle school, it's, you have to go through door number 22, and it's room C104 at the middle school. I encourage everyone who is, are interested in any services that are available in Wareham, as well as if you're interested in volunteer opportunities, to give them a call or stop by. They're going to be sending out beyond school time calendars, or they already have, as well as just all different kinds of information, not only about volunteer opportunities, but then also services that are available. You can reach them at (508) 291-3550, and its extension 6129. One of the things that I recommended today was maybe using the call alert system to alert parents not only about that this is a resource that's available to them, but then also encouraging parents to sign up for volunteer opportunities. You can volunteer, there's about 112 people that are signed up right now, but there, that's not even close to enough of what's needed. And if you even have one hour a month, if you want to volunteer after school, after school time, during school time, one hour every single week, there are all different kinds of volunteer opportunities available to you. So I think we really need to be able to help this group out and get that information out to parents, so then they understand not only just all the needs that we have, but also the services that are available. So we start getting more and more of the community involved in this. So whether you're a parent or you're a community member, there is a very easy way now to get involved in the school. And so I encourage everyone to look it up and really find out more about this program. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
Missed anything? Okay.
Well, Seth?
Okay, let's move on to the minutes of October 2nd. This was a meeting with the Board of Selectmen to discuss the three town meeting articles that the school committee asked to be put on the warrant for October 22nd, which is fast approaching this coming Monday. The articles related to additional state aid for the schools, McKinney-Vento for the transportation system, and the Wareham High School gymnasium roof, about which the petition that the students presented to the Board of Selectmen referred.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 2-0-1. Then the-
Three zero one.
No.
Oh, we have, sorry, 3-0-1. Thank you very much. Then we have the regularly scheduled meeting on October 3rd. Are there any additions or corrections to that, to those minutes?
Movie accepted, presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Sorry, Mike?
I do have a discussion.
Okay.
I just want to say that I think that Michelle's been doing an excellent job with the minutes.
Thank you.
Just because you sit next to her. I agree with you, though. Okay, any other points to be made?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Moving on to committee reports. The Action Committee met-
Action Committee for?
Sorry, thank you. There is really only one Action Committee, but this is the Transportation Action Committee. And we met on a Wednesday, I guess it was last Wednesday. The discussion centered solely on the implications of the presentation that was given to us by the main military authority. For those who've forgotten about this agency, it's a quasi-state agency that refurbishes, in this case, school buses, but they have done most of their business in the past by refurbishing military vehicles, most especially Humvees. The good news is that they are quite prepared to look at a number of our vehicles that are aged seven years to 10 years with a variety of mileages and all the very large 77-passenger buses. That would be done as part of what's called the Joint Vehicle Inspection, and then from those-
Trying to remember the exact number of vehicles that were in that seven to 10-
Sixteen, I think.
About, thank you. Think about 16 vehicles. From those 16, then the School Department and the main military authority would agree on which vehicles to be refurbished, keeping in mind that there is a $35,000 minimum charge for the refurbishment, and it does not include the engine, as well as some other critical parts associated with the drive train. The bad news is that we have lots of vehicles that are older than 10 years, and they did not consider them to be appropriate for this exercise. Specifically, I think we have about nine vehicles, nine or 10 vehicles, that go back to 1998. So while it may quite possibly be a viable program to extend the life of some of our, call it, middle-aged vehicles, it will not solve the problem of what to do with our much older vehicles. The committee will be meeting again on November 4th, I believe, Tuesday, I think that's November 4th. And that will also be post-town meeting, and we'll discuss the implications of this report and whether we want to proceed with a joint venture, excuse me, a joint visual inspection. And the other key element of that agenda will be a report from the town administrator following his review with council of the RFP for privatization. And there are four different models that will be considered. I won't go through them all, but they, there are a variety of ways that the Transportation Department could be theoretically privatized. At some point, the RFP will go out. It will either prove to be an attractive alternative, or it won't be. And of course, if it isn't an attractive alternative, we'll have to solve the problem of our aging fleet. Any questions on the Transportation Action Committee? Policy Review Committee. Cliff?
Do I, am I supposed to talk on the curriculum advisory that we had today?
You can, if you like. Sure.
Well, we had a meeting of the Curriculum Advisory, Superintendent's Curriculum Advisory, and there was an awful lot of discussion, and I did a lot of listening because I don't understand half of it, because it was about the infusion of technology in terms of teaching and learning, and also the district's state of affairs in terms of the infrastructure to support, among other things, wireless distance learning and so forth and so on. And basically, what I got from the meeting, and it was very enlightening from Mrs. Rotella and certainly my colleague, Mrs. Vugan, that understands a lot more of it than I do, that we have, we're really, really behind the eight ball in terms of the infrastructure for technology. And I mean, even if we had the hardware, I don't think we've got the capacity to sustain it. So, I think basically what we're going to do, hopefully, in the very near future, is to work on a needs assessment, K-12, not only on the technical aspect of it or the infrastructure aspect of it, but also how it's going to impact teaching and learning and assessment. So, it was a very interesting meeting, and some very interesting points came out, and I'm sure that Rhonda can fill in the gaps because I don't understand half of it.
I think you did a great job. I really do.
You want to take the other half?
No, I mean, I think that we dove down into, I mean, Teri's done our technology, she's done a great job when it comes to finding a proposal talking about the wireless opportunities that are available to us. But what, we haven't gone far enough when it really, really doing a needs-based assessment on exactly what this district needs when it comes to the supporting infrastructure of some of the things that we want to do. So Barry, I don't know if you brought the vision statement, or if you remember it, but one of the things that came out of it is that we did, we do have a vision statement of at least the first step of what we're looking for, which comes close to just one-on-one technology instruction, that hopefully then we will take it to the next level and give it to a group that will ask more questions about, all right, so you want to, you know, what are you really hoping to do? Are you hoping to have an infrastructure that will support every single child being able to have some sort of system in front of them when it comes to learning? Do you want to be able to have, you know, peer-to-peer learning in different countries? You know, what are you basically looking for? And then helping us decide exactly what we need and then a plan on how we get there. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, there's all different kinds of options. You know, you go underground, you do it from a cloud. There's all different things to do, but we have to find out what is the most cost-effective way to get us, you know, in, where we need to be when it comes to infrastructure. So then, when we get an iPad pilot, when we get, you know, a wonderful donor that is able to bestow all these different computers on us, we want to, we need to be able to have the infrastructure to support it. And right now, we just don't have the bandwidth, the speed, nothing, to be able to do some of the things that we want to do, because it always keeps going back to that.
Questions?
Aye. The only thing I'll add is I understand completely the limitations that the infrastructure presents in terms of using technology as a part of curriculum. I do want people to know, however, that despite those limitations, I learned today that we've got, we've got a couple of exciting, I guess you could call them pilots, but there are two teachers in our system, one in the high school and one in the middle school, that are doing what they, what they call a flip, which is to say, the learning is occurring at home and the homework is being done in the classroom. And I was very excited to learn that this is happening. It is, by all the reading that I'm doing, potentially cutting-edge, but what made me really excited was the fact that this teacher was already, this early in the year, this middle school teacher, was excited about the results that she was getting. So, despite the lack of technology, although this classroom does have some iPads, but the iPads are not being taken home, this teacher is doing her own videos on her own time. So, by the way, there's an example, the state says almost nobody has any exemplary teachers. I don't believe it. So I think we can be excited that some of this stuff is happening anyway, and I am looking forward to it. Mrs. Rotella will be, says will be a presentation on this and more later in the year. She hasn't committed to when, but I'm sure it will be sometime in the second or third month of the new year, perhaps?
If not before.
If not before. Cliff? Oh, I thought you, I saw your hand up.
Okay. Policy Review Committee.
I just, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
But I think that that's something important, you know, that would have been also great to be able to discuss, because it is all, we're talking about technology and curriculum. So Barry, at the next meeting, if we can discuss exactly, let's go into more detail about what is happening in those two classrooms, so then we can really look at it. I would love to learn more about that.
I think they would love more support, even though they're doing great work without it, apparently. The more support we can give them. And of course, it's one data point, you know, we've-
No, it just, yeah, it'd be great. I mean, it's exactly what the committee is there for, so.
Exactly, exactly.
And I would say that we should, I think we should have a presentation, because I know for a fact that there are, you know, quite a few teachers, both at the high school and the middle school, using technology to, you know, aid in teaching and learning. So, you know, I don't, we want to give accolades and kudos to, you know, these two individuals for their innovation, but there's been folks that have been using technology, technology innovation in the past quite extensively. So, you know, I think we have to recognize the fact that, you know, this is not, I don't see this as a, an anomaly. I think that we do have some people that are really dedicated to using technology to infuse teaching and learning or to improve teaching and learning. But obviously, it would be better if we could, if we could, what's the word I want? Mass-distribute this, and, you know.
Agreed completely. And actually, Rhonda's 100% right. This is both about curriculum and instruction, but in a sense, this goes beyond that.
Right. I understand.
Because this is literally saying, the learning, well, the lessons are being, taking place with the teacher's voice, but not the person.
Exactly. Well, flipping is something that's being done nationwide now.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's a nationwide phenomenon, but it's, it's more than a phenomenon. That applies, it might be short-lived. There's reason to believe that it could have-
No, that's, that's a good approach.
It could have staying power for a variety of reasons.
I do, I believe that.
Mike?
Mr. Chair, I wasn't going to say anything, but I was hesitating to say anything about technology because it's a field I'm in. And, you know, when we see this, the school being dismantled as it is, you know, I mean, the focus is on the core, literally, you know, the ELA, the math. I mean, there's so much that could be done, but I mean, it's all money, you know? And it's, I would love, I mean, we hear about, you know, the use of interns all the time, you know, the Selectmen bring it up all the time at that level. I mean, how great would that be to have students learning, you know, programming and HTML and Photoshop even, and, you know, redoing the district's website? You know, imagine that. But, like I said, I hesitate to bring it up because it's, we've got so many other fundamental problems.
Yes, and we will get into some of them with the second part of Mr. Palladino's presentation. Okay, thank you. Policy Review Committee.
Well, we had our first meeting of Policy Review Committee on October 11th, and I want to thank everyone that was there. We, I thought we got an incredible amount of work done on the initial meeting, and I want to thank my new member on the committee, Mike, for his contributions. And I definitely want to publicly thank Deb, you were there also, and all the people that were there, because I know it's over and above the call of duty. And it can be labor-intensive work, and so I appreciate everything you've done, but particularly Mrs. Panerisi, who took the minutes and provided some input, but particularly our superintendent, because he acted, and he took your place, Rhonda, at the computer. So, but I have to admit-
I heard you did redlining, Barry. I heard you made real changes. No redlining. You got to get to that redlining.
Your fingers are a little quicker than his, but he did, he did a really fine job, and I really appreciate his efforts. In front of you, you have the recommendation, the first set of recommendations of the Policy Review Committee. Some of these were carryovers from last year, and some of them were just compliance issues, bringing it up to comply with the law. And so, Michelle was good enough to put the packet together, so I'll do, I'll go over these in the order in which they were presented to you. The first is the recognition of school personnel. That had no change, but it still requires a vote.
I'll take a motion. Sorry, which one was that?
Recognition of school personnel.
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Second, for discussion.
Okay. Question?
The question that I had is, we're very specific on what type of, you know, that we're going to give them a plaque or we're going to give them a certificate. Was there any discussion of just taking that out, so then we have the ability to decide?
No one brought it up.
Okay, that's fine.
But, we're in charge of policy, Rhonda. You can amend it right here if you want. Seriously. It's a board prerogative.
Do you have new language you'd like to propose?
If I wasn't sick, yes, but, no.
Excuses, excuses.
I know. It's not, it's not, I just wanted to know if that was part of the-
Yes, it does, it does specifically tie us into a plaque. It doesn't provide any kind of flexibility, but I was under the impression that that's been a tradition for an awful long time, so.
Yep. Well, I mean, if we want to give them a new car at retirement.
Right, right.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0. Next.
Okay, on the backside of that, you have legal counsel. And on legal counsel, there were a couple of changes. One of the changes was the notation of the law. MGL Chapter 199, Acts of 2011, is cited at the bottom. That was a change for gender equity. And so, we wanted to make sure that the motion, the, had to do with any gender equity issue, we had a highlight. So basically, on this one, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was referencing the law, Chapter 199, Acts of 2011.
I'd agree, but it's not gender equity, it was gender identity?
Gender identity. I'm, I always keep saying that.
I know.
Gender identity. I'm sorry. I keep saying that all the time. So, those are the changes, and that's it.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 4-0-0.
Distribution of school committee meeting documents. Just refer my notes, just give me a second. The term "mail" was changed to make available in the first sentence. We felt that, you know, there are so many ways in which we can provide information and packets of information, that we don't, we shouldn't be just tied into mail. The old policy specifically said "mail." So, one of the changes was, the term "mail" was changed to make available, and take the word "the" out of the, out, and expand the sentence to read "by mail or electronically." So, so we took- So, so we took, so basically now it reads "to make available to the press members by mail or electronically," so that gives us a choice, copies of school committee agenda, da-da-da-da-da-da, and I think that that was the substantive change on this particular policy.
I won't bother with Mike, because he was on the committee, so I assume you're in agreement with this. I was just gonna ask Rhonda, but Mike, did you have something you want to say?
I'm in agreement with it, yes. But, but I did want to add that it dovetailed with the new policy of putting all of the meeting materials online already, and just pointing the press to it.
Which is why I wanted to say, doesn't it make more sense to say, "copies of the school committee agenda and applicable supporting documentation?" Because the, the meeting is more than just the agenda.
Well, the, the policy is documents, so...
But that specifically refers to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
In the first sentence. So, I was thinking we should insert "and" "applicable supporting documentation," unless you think it's already included.
No, that, that's a, that's a noteworthy change.
Okay. Cliff, you agree?
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
It's a good, it's a, so where would you, where would you insert that?
So, Michelle, "copies of the school committee agenda" in the second line, and then after the word "agenda," and "applicable supporting documentation."
Not documentation, documents. Not speech.
Documents, fine. Got it. The English teacher is nodding her head.
I'm not an English teacher, yeah. So, you want "school committee agenda," and then insert "and..."
And "applicable..."
Applicable.
Supporting documents.
In the second paragraph?
No, in the first paragraph.
Second line.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, can I...
Yes.
So, when I saw this, the first line, I just didn't understand why it just didn't read, "it shall be the policy of the Wareham School Committee to make available to press members and commu- press and community members, online, to make available online to press and community members, copies of the school committee agenda and applicable documents in advance of the meeting." I mean, it, it says that we're gonna make available by mail or electronically, why don't we just say that we're gonna make it available online?
The thought of the committee, from what I understand, going back on my memory, was that they, they wanted to leave mail as an option if we needed to use it.
I agree with that, yeah.
I remember we got hung up on the word "or," so you could do either or.
Either or.
Yeah.
This, so, but what this reads to me is that we actually have to push the content out, meaning that we have to mail it to them, or send it to them electronically via email, instead of making it available online.
No, it's not "and."
No, no, just, no, just make it, make it available online.
It doesn't say online here.
Well, well, electronically, electronically, it's available.
To me, that means that you're mailing it, but, okay.
I don't, I don't construe it that way. Anything else? I'll take a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero, next.
Okay, the next one is, school committee meeting minutes. Oh, all right, on the executive session, the, the change was to expand the sentence to re, no, I'm sorry, after the term, the ne- have the minutes avail- for executive session in that second paragraph, to have, insert the term "at the next executive session." In other words, there was a, too much of a gap of time when we discussed that, and we wanted the executive session meetings to be available to the executive session on the next following meeting.
Okay.
And that was the substantive, substantive change on that particular motion.
Any discussion?
I mean, policy.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Funding proposals and applications, was, decided to add the term "and staff" in the first line, because it didn't, because we know that there are staff people that are writing grants and, and doing those kind of things, so it was, add the word "staff" to the, the first line, and I think that that was, that was the only change. Just a, a note, what we did, what we did do is, we decided to, to hit those policies on the first meeting that we thought might have the least amount of change, so that's why you're getting so many of them. I'm sure as, as these meetings progress, the number of policies that you get at our meeting will be less. But these were policies that we kind of identified as needing little, little review. I mean, not, not little review, little change after review. So, that is the change. The change is "staff" on this policy.
In the second paragraph, the penultimate sentence, it says, "No expenditure intended to be funded by grants shall be authorized or obligated prior to actual receipt of such funds or unauthorized written funding commitment."
That was already in there.
Right. It's, it's a, seems to me a key phrase. Are you one hundred percent comfortable that we're doing precisely that?
Yes.
Yeah? We don't take things for granted, and never...
We have to have a letter from DESI telling us that we are receiving it and when. So, for instance, Title I, which we expect, and we always get, we waited until we got the documentation, and this year, they have changed, every other year, they went to August 30th. This year, they've decided to go with the state, or the town fiscal year, and now the grant is gonna be finished June 30th. They didn't let us know until we got it funding October 1st, I believe.
The accountants will probably be happy, but yes.
Yes, so, I mean, we had planned to use it during the summer, so there may be some carryover in it, and they're aware of that, but, so we never spend until we get that letter.
And that's the authorized written funding commitment.
Yes, that's correct, from DESI.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Governing the use of this policy and regulations governing the use of facilities, just give me a second, folks.
Gender identity, that was.
This is one that we had to bring in compliance with the gender, gender identity thing, so the committee added the term, let me just get my other notes, if you'll just excuse me for a second. You might know it'll be the last one, right?
Dr. Sylvia, it's under the whole timeless agreement?
Um...
Under the general, general statement? Michelle pointed me to it.
No wonder I can't find it. Oh, yeah, here it is. Yeah. Okay, yeah, all right. Under the general statement, if you look down at the third line, okay, and it says, "based on gender, race, religion, national origin, ethnic background, color, age, sexual orientation, gender identity or disability." So, we added those words, and I believe that that is the only change on that one. I'm sorry for the delay, folks.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay, harassment policy. On the harassment policy, on the first paragraph, the third line, it says, oh, that's, that's kind of the general, that's the same statement, actually.
Yeah.
Gender, race, religion, national origin, ethnic background, color, age, sexual orientation, and we inserted "gender identity or disability."
Gender and gender identity, what a crazy word. Okay.
Those were the updates we had to do to comply with the law.
I'm moved to accept.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Okay. Where are we here? I'm lost. Funding...
Hiring?
Automatic, no.
Automated...
Automated external defibrillator policy. Automated, yeah. Automated external defibrillator policy. Go up to my other notes. I don't know how these got out of order, I had them in order. Here it is. On the, the second paragraph, we inserted, instead of saying "the school nurse of the schools involved," we took out "of the schools," you don't have that in front of you, but we took out "of the schools involved," because it did read "the school nurse of the schools involved," and we put "the school nurse at participating schools, comma, in, in consultation with the point nurse, comma, will da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da." So, what we did is, we changed "of the schools involved" to "at participating schools," and to my knowledge, that's the only change.
First of all, in that second paragraph, Cape and Islands EMS Incorporated? Why is that in that paragraph?
I don't know, that was on the original policy.
Well, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Second question, to enable, in the first line, "to enable targeted responders to deliver early defibrillation." Well, it seems to me if you're gonna use a phrase like targeted responders, we ought to define it. Who, what is a targeted responder?
Well, a targeted responder would be one that's been trained on a defibrillator.
Well, I guess we could say that, but it doesn't say that, number one, and number two, I'm not sure we want everybody who's been trained on a defibrillator to necessarily be using one of our defibrillators, because they assert they've been trained, and how do we know they've been trained? It's a little, it's a little ambiguous.
Well, you've got the recommendation from the committee.
And of course, it said, then it has responders' use of the automated external defibrillator. The responder could be anybody. I'm personally not...
I think it makes reference to somebody on an ambulance or emergency services. That's the responder, someone that comes to the scene.
No, actually, it says, "the responders' use of the AED should not replace the care provided by emergency medical services providers." So, these are people outside of the scope of normal emergency medical services.
Right.
Well, bottom line is, I'm not prepared to vote for it with Cape and Islands in there, and without some further definition.
So, your, your problem with this is Cape and Islands?
Yes, that's one of my problems. The other problem is, I'd like a little bit more definition of the so-called targeted responders. Because I'm sure not, I'm sure that parents would like to know who's ever using this device, has been trained, and we've got proof of the fact that they've been trained, we know who they are, et cetera, et cetera.
I have to agree.
Okay.
So, we want to table it? Want a motion to table?
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll take a motion.
Motion to table?
Okay.
Sorry, motion to table or motion to send it back to committee?
All right, let's send it back to committee.
All right, send it back to committee. That would be better. Thank you, Rhonda.
With drum, it wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded.
So, so, motion to send back to the Policy Review Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero, next.
Hiring. Again, this was one that had to be brought into compliance, that's why we did so many, and we had to, again, add the word "gender identity" in the, I believe it's number two.
The number, number six, hiring and promoting employees, does, if I remember right, that does address the whole idea of supervising someone that's a family member, correct?
Yes.
So, it, in this policy, that's, it covers that when it comes to hiring, that...
Well, this is about hiring, not supervising.
Hiring and promoting employees.
That's true.
If that doesn't preclude us from inserting supervising.
The policy is about hiring.
That's right.
That's true.
So, do we need to add something in there about the hiring individual, or that, you know, that they can't have a direct relationship with someone who they're supervising, or a family member?
Well, technically, we can't even talk about promoting, because that's not hiring, since this is the hiring policy, so this question of, is whether we're, we're trying to broaden this policy on the fly.
We can't hire a family member.
Yes.
That's already policy.
So, when it says hiring and promoting, promoting is looked upon as it's a vacancy, somebody has to apply for it, they're appointed, so that's why this policy goes to that as well. And it, basically, that is the ethics law that has to be followed. So, this precludes what we're talking about from occurring, and perhaps, this, you know, needed another policy for supervisory, we'll have to look at that, find the appropriate policy.
Yeah, because even if it's in mass general law, 194 Conflict of Interest Law, this is carving out a piece of that law with respect to the policy. Do we have any reference in other policies regarding the supervision of, of family members?
I believe we do.
Yes, we do.
All right. I have a problem, a minor problem, with number four, and that is, it seems to me that we... Uh, and that is, it seems to me we should say, "No school committee member shall be hired for a position in the school department." Any, you know, sometimes people don't even apply and they get hired. The key here is, we don't want them hired. Anybody have any problem with changing "shall apply" and to simply say, "No school committee member shall be hired"?
Um, I, I don't know. We're on a slippery slope there. Because I think school committee people can be, I think it's legal for them to hold position, ancillary positions in the district. So I think, well, I think we'd be on a slippery slope there, and I think if challenged in court, we'd lose.
So.
Like, I think a school committee person could, could technically be a coach. Even though, even though, no, no, not you. Because I know, I know the situation with you, but I'm talking about in general. Could be a club advisor, could be a drama club advisor, could be, so those are, those are positions, they're ancillary kind of positions, that really, the school committee member, if they've got a special expertise, might want to do. So I, I think that we're on a slippery slope here. I, I think we're on a slippery slope.
I, I, I guess I don't understand the distinction. I mean, it, this, I mean, the way it's currently written, it's like, don't even bother, right?
Yeah. And candidly, I wasn't even thinking myself, about myself when I made the comment because I don't think of myself an employee, although technically, I am. So.
Yeah, but not hiring someone is discriminatory. You're on a slippery slope. That's what I'm saying. You know, if they can't, if they can't apply, they can't be hired.
Well, I'm not sure that's, that's true, but, um, I don't know. I probably should recuse myself from the discussion.
I didn't say.
Okay, so anybody else want to talk about this?
No.
Alright, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any other further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Me.
I didn't mean that for you.
I know you did. I know you did. But you're right. Okay.
I would like an investigation called.
Let's get the Attorney General.
Okay, residency.
Residency regulations.
Regulations. The committee added the term gender identity. Again, just to bring this up in compliance with the law. That's the only change on this.
Okay.
And this was before you, just last year.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, four zero zero.
Did you have a motion?
We didn't get a motion? I'm sorry. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Michelle's usually the one who catches me on that.
Getting back to what you were wanting before, I'm still typing.
Sorry about that, Michelle.
Now Barry would've had that all typed for me.
I thought it was Rhonda who was quick. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, four zero zero. You with us, Michelle? Okay. Is that it, Cliff?
No, one more. Certain seizure was one that was a carryover from last year.
Oh, yeah.
We wanted clarification, we wanted legal opinion. And if, if you don't mind, I'd like to turn this part of the meeting over to the superintendent because he got the, the legal opinion. And basically, what you see in front of you is exactly what you had last year.
Okay, go ahead, Barry.
So in the first paragraph, where it says, "School administrators maintain the right to seize items in a student's possession and to search school property, lockers, desks, et cetera, assigned to a student and any vehicle parked on school property under the following guidelines." The, um, we were asked to get a legal opinion because one of the committee members questioned our right to be able to search a vehicle on school property. The legal opinion came back that school property, meaning the parking lot, just like a locker, that we have the right to do that to keep students safe and that we don't need probable cause like the police to pad it. But we just need a reasonable cause. So that if somebody tells us that there is something in a car, we have the right to ask the student to open it up to find it for safety purposes. And the legal opinion that I read that evening verified that. We did add the one item, I believe, under the search where we said that a second person.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Barry. Yes, we did. I, I apologize to the committee.
President of the second administrator or designee?
Yes, yes.
Another safety issue.
That is new. A second administrator or designee. Please forgive me.
And that, that also came from our attorney.
Good idea. Any discussion? Yes.
Mr. Chair, because a member of our committee isn't here tonight, and I think that he was one that had, you know, questions and concerns about this, and I know the superintendent just went through it, but I'd like to, I'd like to hold this policy until next meeting, until Kenny can be here, so then Cliff can, I'm sorry, that Dr. Vrenovich can go through that again. I just, I, I feel it's important that he's here for this one, just because he was the one that brought up the initial concern.
That's interesting, because my memory was that I did, but I don't care either way. That's fine. That's fine.
I don't care either. I mean.
When in doubt?
What, what I'm gonna say is that, you know, the, um, there was discussion at the committee level, Policy Review Committee, this is what they voted on, this is what we're presenting. And so, we did get the legal opinion, and that's all that was required of us to do. So, you know, I, I just soon moved forward on it, but no, that's no problem with me. Vote on it anytime you want.
We can't just hold it just and have Kenny weigh in on this one. That would be great.
Alright, we just won't, I'll, I just won't take a motion on this one. Okay.
Uh, I believe, Mr. Chair, that concludes the report of the Policy Review Committee. As I said before, we, we, we pumped out quite a bit of work in a short time.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank the committee.
I do thank the committee and all those involved. Good work, thank you. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Um, I'll just make a few announcements. One is that enclosed in your package is the budget, um, agenda, the timeline, um, the meetings that have been scheduled. I would like to point your attention specifically to the January 3rd, um, day. That's held here at the middle school library. And it's a full day. It's from eight in the morning until approximately three in the afternoon. It is televised. All of the directors and principals come forward to say why they need what they have asked for. And if we have beyond the budget advisory committee, if other members would like to attend, then I would ask Michelle to post that meeting. So that's why I would like to point it out, so people can check their schedules and let Michelle know if they'd like to come, and then we can post it as a meeting. That's the day. We invite the FinCom to be present as well.
This is what day again, Barry?
That is Tuesday, January 3rd.
Thursday.
Says Thursday.
Yeah, it is a Thursday.
Thursday, January 3rd.
Okay. My piece of paper says Tuesday, so if that's okay.
My piece of paper says Thursday. Michelle, would you post the meeting because I plan to attend?
January 3rd is. I think you're probably right. It is a Thursday.
I'm sure it is.
Alright, so, that's just a typo, I guess. And secondary with that, we have a scheduled meeting of the same budget advisory committee to discuss major accounts, policy. Mike, I think we said it's next Tuesday, right, at nine?
Yeah, October 23rd.
Yeah, and both Ken and Mike will be present as well as myself.
Good, okay.
We'll go through that.
And is it, excuse me, but is it the intention of the budget advisory committee being there on the 5th and the 6th as well?
Yes, yes.
If for some reason either one of those gentlemen are unable to attend, let me know and I'll attend in their place.
Yep, they've already said that they will be there.
You've already confirmed?
Yes.
Good, okay, great.
The, um, first, and you've already heard that we've had our first Curriculum and Technology Advisory Committee meeting today, and we've scheduled our next meeting. And I will let you know when that is in the package.
I got it here, I think. It's in November, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I think it was.
No, it was November.
Nov- it was November?
Yes.
That was two weeks from today.
Curriculum, Friday the 16th at 7:30 a.m.
Of November.
Of November.
Okay. And just as a way of keeping people informed about things that break and need to be fixed that are not budgeted, um, during the summer, our buildings are inspected by the building inspector. And, um, we had an issue with the high school fire doors in that when they released, the pneumatic closes no longer worked. I mean, the high school is 23, 24 years old. And, um, we were asked to get an architect's signature and how to fix them correctly. The quote we had was for about $17,000. Ms. Miranda was able to go on to the business manager's, um, listserv, post it, and we were given the name of another company that has come in and has given us a quote of $8,000. And we are gonna go because the fire department has been calling Principal Palladino or Ms. Miranda daily about getting these done, so we're moving on.
Maybe the district could float us alone.
It's just, it's maintenance that has to be done, and, you know, it's above what we had hoped, but, so we are having that work done. And we have begun discussions throughout the district at various, um, either, I, I've been to three now of school councils. I plan on getting to all of them at least one more time to begin the discussion of space needs. I visited, actually, this week, four schools, but particularly Minnet and Deccus. Every square inch of those buildings are being used. And in fact, when we go through our enrollment numbers here, you'll see that we have more students attending both Deccus and Minnet than are currently at the middle school or the high school. And so, we're gonna get all of our facts and figures together. We're gonna have multiple occasions to discuss this. We'll have a public hearing about it. And then at a point in time, I will come back to the committee with all of the issues and ask you to weigh in with your thoughts about next steps. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions? The next item on the agenda was inserted at my request, which is school uniforms discussion. The reason I inserted it, I was the beneficiary of an email from a Mr. Coyle who had a number of suggestions, all of them thoughtful. Fortunately, I was able to respond to him that, that approximately half of them were already doing, which I'm sure he was glad to hear. He is a long-term time educator. But one of the points that he made was he thought it would be significantly beneficial to the school culture and, and the overall performance of the students if we had school uniforms. Now, I will tell you candidly that I have raised this issue when I have been in, um, at school council meetings. And I will tell you that I have been uniformly met with positive feelings on the part of parents who were attending. Now, these, of course, are parents who are active in the schools and care a great deal about the school culture and the, and the performance of the students. So it's not exactly a cross-section, and it's not a lot of data points, but it was universally positive. And I've also gleaned that the staff feels it would be a positive thing as well. So I'd like to just simply have a discussion, not a long discussion. Michelle thought that 20 minutes was plenty, and we're already over our deadline, so if it only lasted five or 10, that would be fine. But I'd either like it to die, a natural death, because I'm the only one who thinks it's a good idea, or I would like to take the next step, which is for us to approach school councils, administration, and see what their feelings are now, now that they know that the school committee is in favor of, of taking it to the next step. So with that said, I just want to hear what other members have to say about it.
I'm in favor of definitely exploring that with school councils, with parents, you know, additional parents outside of school councils. The, the thing that I want to know before we even start down that road is, what is the cost to a district to introduce uniforms into the school system as well as the cost per parent? Because I think that that would determine, I think, how strongly we, you know, go after this or not. If it's a significant cost to the district and we're in a, we're in a very difficult place right now, then it's not something that really should be explored right now. It still could be, but, you know, are we going to choose that over a teacher? But just looking at what the, does anyone know what the costs are to a district or to parents? Before we move forward.
In all candor, I had assumed the cost to the district's budget was zero. I may be missing something, and I'm more than happy to be enlightened. But does anybody have any reason to believe that any money should be coming out of the school budget as a result of this decision?
No.
No.
Okay, and with respect to the cost to parents, I made the assumption, and I don't mean to be facetious in saying this, that they're going to be sending their parents, their children to school clothed. So whether it's a, a inexpensive pants, skirt, shirt, whatever, that happens to match what other kids are wearing, or it's something else that may be considerably more expensive for all we know, it's still, it's still the cost of, of clothing.
I just, I think that it's, it's a responsibility of this committee to really take a look at costs before going out and, and exploring this more, whether people want it or, or don't want it. I think that that's one of the questions that'll come back, which is, what is the cost to be able to implement something like this? And is there any rules, and I'm just throwing things out there, and I might be wrong, but we do have, you know, 50-something percent of our population on free and reduced lunches. There, are there any things that we need to consider with that from a state level? I think that it should be explored absolutely. I would be 100% for it. I would just want to know what the cost is.
I, I do think that having answers to that question, like exploring with Walmart, Target, whatever, what they would charge for the items that we think should be included, are, that's reasonable preparation for talking to parents. But do I expect that the answer to, that I would get from establishments like that would preclude us going forward? No, because the last thing we want to do is create a burden. In fact, I'm hoping parents see this as a, as a simplification of their lives rather than as a financial burden. But I may be naive. Anything else?
Yeah.
Mike?
Uh, thank you. I saw this agenda item, and it really caught my interest. So I, I, I mentioned it to, you know, anyone I bumped into, you know, and soccer field or, you know, at dinner or whatever, and the people I knew. Again, most of these folks are, are pretty active or involved one way or another with the schools. And, and to my surprise, yeah, it was pretty much universally positive. The concern being the cost, obviously. But, I mean, it's worth, it's worth exploring, but, but, I mean, Rhonda kind of beat me to it. I mean, I, I, I don't think it's compatible with, with our, with our district. I mean, 54 or plus on free and reduced lunch, we just had a, a discussion here not too long ago about how are we gonna get people to pay for lunches they're not paying for? You know what I mean? So it's worth exploring. I, I'm not optimistic that outside of, you know, I guess, the, the the, the people that are active and involved would, would really support it much. I mean, yes, the, the parents have to, you know, clothe their kids either way, but these, these would be technically, you know, exclusively school clothes. And they'd have, they would be in addition to their other clothes, so that the, the cost would be more. I mean, the kids come home now and they don't change, you know, they go back out and play, you know?
That, I'm showing my age because that, of course, is something that I did when I was a child, but...
Me too.
Cliff?
Those are the first words out of my mother's mouth. Change your clothes and go outside. Get out of my hair. And I was only home for about two seconds. Nice to be rejected, but no. Look, first of all, I don't like the term, this is, I'm just being, just speaking for myself. I don't like the term "school uniforms." I would much prefer to talk about attire for school, or school, school clothing, a, a uniform code of school clothing, for lack of a better word. Uniforms to me is kids going with their little plaid jumpers or their little, everybody looks exactly the same. And I, I think that that defeats the purpose. I think the purpose for, for a standard of dress, for lack of a better word, is that there is, there are studies out there, psychological developmental studies that show that you act the way you dress. And when you dress like you're going to a beach party, and I'm not just talking about the students, I'm also talking about the professional staff. When you dress like you're going to a beach party, then you have an attitude, and you sort of have an unconscious little man in your head saying, "Well, we're going to a beach party." So, I think, I, I think a standard of dress would be something that could promote individuality for our kids and yet provide a, a, a platform on what could be determined as acceptable dress at public schools. And if we were gonna do that, I think the best way to do it would be to do what I, to do what I did in Sandwich when we did the discipline policy, is I had representation from every grade review the discipline policy, and we did it on a yearly basis. And I'm gonna tell you, those kids knew what they were doing. And they came up with incredible recommendations and suggestions to the discipline policy. I can't see any reason why we couldn't put together a broad-based committee of parents, teachers, and most definitely students, to discuss the possibility of a uniform code or a uniform dress code for way and public schools. And I'm not talking about everybody looking exactly the same in their little blue jumpers like my kids did when they went to St. Mary's. But I, I do think that there, I think that there is a deterioration of dress, of attire, at all the schools. I think that most parents would, would look at it as a way to take that pressure off them because if we define what appropriate school attire is, then it sort of takes some of the pressure off the parent to conform to all of the latest fashion or what have you, and peer pressure and, and all that kinda stuff. So, do I think it has a place? Absolutely. I can tell you right now, in all the years that I was at the high school, and I took kids, I took kids out of the country on trips, and they dressed their part. And when they dressed their part, they acted differently. So, I think a standard of, of public school dress is something that is appropriate. I think a, a dress code that clearly explains what is acceptable and what is not acceptable leaves, leaves it open for interpretation to a certain degree, but does provide a baseline of a dress standard. So, yes, I, I am absolutely in favor of doing this. I would, I would want it to be done in a really, really broad-based committee at both the elementary level and at the high school. And even the elementary level, kids know what they're talking about. You know, I, I've got a, a second grader for a grandson, and he knows style. So, they know what they're talking about in the second grade. So, do, do I think it's something that we could accomplish? Absolutely. Is it something that I think that we need to accomplish? I do. And I, and again, I stress the fact, I don't think it is a standard of dress for the students, but also a standard of dress for the teachers.
Let's, let's leave it at the students for the moment, and I, but because I think we already have a, a dress code for the, for the staff as part of the last contract that we negotiated. I do want to ask Cindy for her, her thoughts on this, knowing that it would have no impact on you. You're a senior, right? Yes. So, this would not happen at, at any sooner than next fall. So, you can be totally objective in, in responding to this if you have any thoughts. The microphone would be helpful.
I think that it's a very good idea, and I think it promotes school, like, school unity. And like, you know how like teams and everything, they have their own uniforms. Like, even student council has their own shirts. Then why shouldn't a school have a universal type of look, I guess, like, not exactly the same, but... And I know that sometimes the schools have trouble with dress codes. And people breaking the dress codes, the skirts are too short, the shirts are falling off. And the thing is that you tell them, they fix it, and then you turn around and they put it back where it is. And you can't follow them around twenty-four, seven. And when you send them home, they're all like, "Oh, my parents can't pick me up." They make a big deal, and they just go sit in a room, and they do it again tomorrow. So, I feel that if we make some type of school wear that's acceptable by everybody, it would benefit everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Yes?
And it's to Dr. Rubenovich or to our administrators. Would they see a dress code or a uniform? Would it be easier to enforce from a uniform standpoint or the dress code that we have right now? Would it be simpler on the administrators to be able to enforce it if we had a uniform?
Mr. Palladino, if your troop there would like to come down to the table, we'd be happy to have you participate in this discussion if you'd like.
I think, and I'll turn it over to Debbie in a second. I, I think we may be able to save you some time because we've done some extensive research in this dating back to when Debbie and I were both assistant principals, and most recently through our advisory. So, I'm gonna have her explain a little bit more about that. But definitely in regards to discipline, a large percentage of our time in September and June are spent on school dress code violations. And quite frankly, it's, it's uncomfortable sometimes to deal with those issues of students of the opposite sex. So, with that said, I'm gonna have Debbie give you some information on what we've done in the past.
Well, I think it was about six years ago, we did a Survey Monkey, and we did not get the majority of a vote for that, and that went out to parents. In fairness, however, we did have a, not, a, a really large vote showing in, in that. So, at that time, we put it on the table. Because of the dress code issues at the school and the difficulty in enforcing them right now, we did do a survey last year through our advisory committee, and we put that out to students. Our advisory committee has not met yet this year. We will be meeting next, next Monday, as a matter of fact. We will be looking at that survey. We did also ask for student input in terms of a modified uniform versus a full-fledged, you know, uniform in the tradition of the, maybe the parochial schools, for instance. We also asked students if they were interested on, in serving on a committee, as Dr. Sylvia had mentioned before. So, once we compile that data, it, we will have the information from the student perspective, anyway. And our plans were if we felt it was favorable for most students, then we would bring the survey to the parents at that point in time, probably using a lot of the same questions. We also gave the students a handout with a compilation of research that we had done as a committee that did show the cost effectiveness for a parent. And most of the research showed that it was a cost savings to parents. And going back to what Chairman Swett had said, the, you know, parents have to buy the clothes anyway. I mean, it certainly wouldn't be something that you would do in the, in the middle of a year. But if you give parents notice, and this is what other schools have done, and what they have found with their, their surveys and their research, and schools that have actually implemented a, a school uniform, that it's a, you know, do it a year or two out of starting the program, and make sure that the parents are involved in picking out, you know, and the students, obviously, what this uniform would be. And again, mostly modified uniforms where it would be a certain type of color, for instance, a certain type of shirt or pants. And the parents found that it was very cost-effective, as long as they had the time. In other words, they were buying the school clothes during the summer. So, if we knew, say, in May or June, that we were moving forward with this, the information would go out to parents, and it would actually be a cost savings to them. So, I think once we tally up the, the survey results that we did in June of last year, we'll be able to bring that information to the committee.
And there's national data on that, though, because there, there is a lot of, there is a lot of data on this because there are a lot of schools that have done it, especially at the secondary level, second and middle school.
Well, the data that we gave to the, the students was a result of all the research that we compiled, so that the students would be informed of, you know, what the pros and cons. And we did present both pros and cons to the students so that they didn't think we were just pushing them in that direction. We gave them the cons that, what the research showed, some of the, maybe the not-so-good things about uniforms. But we also showed them the positives as well.
Question?
Yes.
One question?
Mike?
Just throwing it out there, if you, if you know, if you don't know, anyone. Do you know of any other public school within fifty miles that's not a charter school that, that requires uniforms?
Yes.
Who? Where?
Fall River.
Fall River?
Fall River, middle school and elementary schools have their own individual uniforms. I have seen them at the bus stop. They look very nice. They, they each have a different color shirt, and again, they, they have a sort of a modified uniform. It's a certain color of pants, it's either khaki or navy blue, and the shirts are different colors for different schools. The, they, there is a, I guess, an option of wearing just a particular color, or there's a shirt that has an emblem on it that the students actually helped design, which I think would be a great idea in terms of bringing the unity to the school, have the kids involved in the design process, and the students can buy either the, the official uniform shirt or as long as it's a particular color and style of a shirt.
And certainly, Fall River has its own share of, you know, economic challenges.
I would absolutely agree with that.
So, that'd be a great case study right there, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What's going on tonight?
I was going to say, I don't think we need a vote. I sense a consensus that we should proceed to the next step, which is, I'll leave to Dr. Rubenovich to put together a, a, some information for the committee after this vote has been tallied, and perhaps some recommendations as to how we could move forward. Because it, it would appear that the school committee would like to take the next step and continue to explore the idea. Fair enough?
Well, the, the school committee could start a subcommittee, and two members could run with the ball.
Advisory committee.
Advisory committee?
Well, no, I think maybe a subcommittee, let the school committee run with the ball. To be perfectly honest, I think between all the initiatives, we talked about the Taunton Letter and all the various things that are on our table, looking at achievement and so forth. This is not the top of my priority list.
Duly noted. Although I, I'm, some of the data suggests it helps with achievement. Would anybody like to be part of that subcommittee?
I'll be part of the subcommittee.
Okay. Okay. If no one else wants to be, I'll...
I'll, I'll be glad to work on any way I can. But I think that we've got, let's not put the cart before the horse. Let's, let's get the data that we need, and let's get the feelings of the school community. You know, they've done some preliminary research. Let's, let's go forward with the advisory and, and discussing it at the school councils, and then at some point in time, bring it back to us so that we can decide a course of action.
Do you wanna just be, say, a point, instead of a committee, a point person?
I'm happy to. But I think that what would be great is if this came organically from the high school.
Correct.
If this came, so if we asked the administrators at the high school to continue with their work, come back and present, and then it, so instead of, it's the school committee, this is already an initiative that's going on at the high school, we just ask them to keep going and, and come back with what their recommendations are based on the data. I'm happy to be the point person, absolutely. But I mean, I would really, what I would basically say is, all right, when can we get this group on? Which meeting can we get them on so then they can present their findings?
Well, not before they're ready, but I also don't think we should rule out the other three major schools, and in fact, the other schools, all of the other schools, because this is not just be a high school initiative. So, just keep that in mind.
Agreed.
Okay? All right, then I'll wait for you to put it, ask me to put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving right along.
Okay. So, we're moving on to the SAT and the AP test results. Before we get started, I'd just like to recognize Chris Maz, my department head for math. Debbie Freitas, as you know, the assistant principal, and he had to present the results from this past year. I'm gonna just kinda go through the AP scores. I'm just gonna look at, I'm gonna highlight this year, and then I'll pause at the end of the AP scores, give you a little data, and then certainly have time to answer questions. We have three AP portfolio assessments in the art department. As you can see, Studio Art II Design, four students, we averaged a three point two five. Studio, Studio Art III-D, we did not have students that were interested in it this past year, but we, we may in the future, than we have in the past. Studio Art Drawing, we had one student score to four point oh, and those are the art. Biology, excuse me, unfortunately, the year before, we did have some cuts that had to be made, and there was not a large number of students that were interested in the biology. So, in two thousand and twelve, we did not have the class, thus we did not have the test. But I'm happy to report today that we did have the interest for this school year, and Biology AP is back in place after one year hiatus. Calculus AB moved up to a one point nine two. We had thirteen students in the class taking the exam. English Language Composition, we had nineteen students averaging two point seven four, which is an improvement as well this year, and that is the eleventh grade students. English Lit and Composition, which is the twelfth grade students, went up to a two point seven one, and twenty-four students participated in that exam. Environmental Science hadn't been in place since two thousand and seven. As I mentioned in a previous meeting today, our courses that we run are driven by the students, and there was over, over sixteen students that wanted Environmental Science. Fourteen were lucky enough to fit in their schedule last year, and they scored a two point three six in the first year. Macroeconomics, we had fourteen students enrolled, scored a one point five seven, down slightly from last year. Microeconomics did go up to a one point eight six with the same fourteen students taking that exam as well, it's one class, two exams. Statistics went down. We had sixteen students, and we went down to a one point two five. And US History, with seven students, went up to a two point eight six. The, the piece that I'm excited about, and I'll explain in a little bit more detail why I'm excited about that. There are fifty-one percent of the students that took this, these exams scored a three or better, at least one three or better. And I had a chance to have a conversation with a few people about these statistics. Many of our students take many AP exams, okay? We have students that take any, some do just take one, a lot take two, a percentage take three, some take four in a year. Four is pretty much the maximum, maximum that we would have. So, fifty-one percent of the students taking the exam scored at least a three or better in one exam. So, I'm really excited about that number. Those are qualifying scores, so when we look at some of the reasons why students take AP exams, one of the reasons is they need to have a qualifying score to get the college credit. And as you can see, we've gone up, I think substantially over the last three years, and more students are scoring those qualifying scores. I'm also at the end... I'm also, at the end of this presentation, going to talk a little bit about some improvement plans that we have. And one of the goals through the improvement plan is to get more students to those qualifying scores by having more students enrolled in the, in the courses. I know at the beginning of this school committee meeting, I believe you were giving numbers on, on student enrollment. And, you know, it's very difficult to run these courses because there's only a certain percentage of students that either have met the criteria or will be successful in those courses. And through some improvement plans, we feel we'll have more students in these classes. And thus, the students teacher ratio will be a little higher than the numbers you're seeing. Keep in mind, we do require every student that's in the class to take the exam. It's a requirement that we started probably six, seven years ago. It's been, it's been a few years back, so. So those are the, the AP students that scored three or above. And as you can see, while our enrollment has gone down a percentage, a few percentage points, we've been pretty consistent with the number of students who have been taking AP exams and AP courses. So I'm excited that that has stayed pretty stagnant there. We hope this year to improve that and to have more students this year and in the following years, take these courses and take these exams. And definitely would like to take some questions if you have any.
Mike?
Just a curiosity, I guess. The micro and macroeconomics, are those just AP courses?
Correct, just an AP course.
You have to be in AP to, to take them.
Correct.
And are they, they're electives, I take it?
They're electives, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think it's great that you offered. I wish, I wish it was offered when I was in school, in high school.
It's a great class.
Yeah.
Rhonda?
I can tell you, I mean, thank you for putting the state averages up there. In, in some cases, we're, you know, we're, it's double digits that they're being assigned the state average. Any insight into, I mean, why we just can't, that we continue to just lag behind, that we're not catching up to the state average?
I think there's a, there's a couple of compounding factors. I, first of all, I just want to preface, we did go up five percent, which I was, across the board, I was pretty happy with that. We, we've done some preliminary studies on time on learning. And the schools that do very well with their AP scores have extra time. And it's not always built into the schedule. They have extra time with their students. And that's what we're looking at with this grant that we, we feel confident we're going to receive this year. There are things such as Saturday schools and there are, a week, a couple of weeks before these AP exams, there are kind of like cram sessions after school. And some of them have labs, there's labs at night for some of these courses. So when you look at the schools that are scoring above state average, they have more time where they meet with their students. And it's, most of it is beyond the traditional school day.
And the teachers that are teaching these classes, didn't we, didn't you send them to, or some went to training last year?
Everyone, with the exception of one who had a medical issue he was dealing with, went to a training. That was last summer, not this past summer, that was two thousand and eleven, they went to the training. And I think that's part of the reason why we were seeing that five percent increase across the board. But I still don't, obviously, it's, it's not enough. We need more. That was a good step in the right direction. It was a costly step and, you know, it did cost some money and it cost them their time. They volunteered a week of their summer at a training. Usually it was in Pittsburgh, but some people went on their own to Albany, Vermont, and, and they did that. We paid for the course, but they paid for the rest. So we saw some incremental increases, but I think to take it, to get close to that state average, and I, I don't want to just rest on the state average, but we've got to get there first. We need to extend the time on learning.
Thank you.
Cliff?
Well, there's two schools of thought on that. We're going to get our sharpest and brightest more time. When I would, I could argue that our sharpest and brightest don't need more time. But be that as it may. The bottom line is, you know, and I, I thank Scott for the work that he's done in terms of the professional development and his excitement about going up a little bit. But you used the word substantial, you didn't go up substantial, you went up. But it wasn't substantial increase. And for the most part, we're still, most of this, most of the AP courses are hovering around one. I mean, your average score has a crack two in a lot of tests. And for my intents and purposes, two is not all that great. So I, I, I really thank him for his efforts. I, I thank him for the extra training and the PD that he did for the, the courses. I, I still believe that if we don't have the numbers to offer an AP course, we shouldn't offer an AP course. Unless you're doing an independent study, much like the art. Because I, I'm sure that most of those kids are involved in one art class, but yet they took a multitude of AP tests. And when you've got a kid that's interested in not, you know, preparing a portfolio, obviously, they're, they're very interested. And you, they, their potential for getting a, a four or a five is probably higher than most. But be that as it may, when you only have seven kids taking a US History, I question the wisdom of that. You know, because I know we have an honest program. I mean, we're, we're tying up a big salary for seven kids. So the AP program is, is a necessary evil. I've never been totally sold on the AP program, that's my own bias. I think it's a big marketing ploy. I think kids spend, spend a lot of money for, and the primary reason why they take the AP courses is for transcript enhancement, for no other reason. Because in, in some cases, a three, where they may get credit for a course with a three, it's not a credit reducing situation, it's just that they don't have to take that course. They have to take something else to get their required number of credits. Not, not in all cases. But in some colleges, universities won't even accept a three. So I, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm not excited about our AP program. I haven't been excited about it for a while. I'm not the principal, so I know that you, you are excited about it and you did show some increase. I have to give you credit. But for the most part, I'm, I'm not excited about the AP program.
I just want to, if I can, you know, we're probably the only school in the district that is in direct competition with many other schools. And to attract the best and the brightest and to keep them in district, you have to spend the money on these, on these type of courses and these programs. I also want to remind you that last year our teachers negotiated a, a new schedule and it did give us that flexibility. Because make no mistake about it, when I see seven eights in a class, it, it definitely raises an eyebrow. But at the same point in time, because of us negotiating that contract and the, the units accepting that, we did have some flexibility to offer some courses that we may not be able to offer in the future.
Absolutely, I understand that too. And, and again, it's your school and I respect your school and I respect the fact that you did go up and that you were making some progress. But, I mean, if you look at all the schools holistically, you know, we're still not there.
Right, and we don't want to be selective and, and, and just put the big, the best and the brightest and, and make those numbers all sevens across the board. We want to open that up and, and part of the goal of this grant, if we receive it, is to open this up to a, a larger number of students and to get more students that would have those qualifying scores.
I will also add the, one of the benefits of an AP course for a student, and the research does back this up, is that students, regardless of their score, that are challenged and have the experience of an AP course will statistically do better in college and they will stay in college longer or, and finish than a student that does not have the AP experience. So I think in, in and of itself, when we're looking...
Because traditionally, students that take AP are the top tier students. So obviously, there's going to be a correlation.
Well, yes, but again, this grant is looking at expanding that net of students that go into AP courses and offering some supports for those students with the extra time, offering supports for the teachers that teach these courses. And again, you know, these students will have that opportunity and not just the, the upper echelon of our school, but again, widening that net and looking, maybe looking at our honors level courses and moving some of those students into the AP level courses.
And, and Debbie and Scott, I, I openly admit it's my bias.
And I respect that.
And, and if I can just touch upon the transcript piece, that, a few years back, we did change the course description in that it required the student to take the exam because Dr. Sylvia is exactly right. Some of the students, and, and still I'm sure to this day, a, a few of the students, took the course to enhance the transcript. One way we tried to combat that is to say, okay, you're going to, you're going to take the course, it'll be on the transcript, but you also have to take the exam. Some schools in the, in our conference, it's an option whether you take the exam or not and...
Oh, I admire you for that, absolutely. If you're going to take AP course, you're going to take the test.
Correct.
Never mind. I'm sorry, thanks.
On that one piece, if you not only said to get the bump up on your transcript, you had to get a certain score on the test, not just take it, but get a certain score on it, what do you think would happen to enrollments and would that provide an incentive to work that much harder?
I think the issue is the, the time sensitivity to when the transcripts need to go out and when we receive the results.
They're already accepted in college.
In some cases.
In most cases. The test in May.
More than two thirds of the students taking the tests are, are seniors.
Not if they're juniors.
Right, but two thirds of the students are seniors.
Well, okay, but even one third.
But then that wouldn't be fair to the seniors. You couldn't have one policy for the juniors and a separate policy for the seniors.
I'm not saying change, change the policy, you'll just have to amend their transcript once the scores come back.
Meanwhile, the final transcript is going out to their, their school.
With an, with an asterisk, that it's pending AP scores. I mean, let's face it, these scores aren't what you want, they're not what we want.
Yeah, but that's, but our kids are at an extreme disadvantage if we did that. And I don't want to do that either.
You say disadvantage.
In terms of college acceptance, of course.
Having a student take education seriously
No, yeah, I know, but the part...
Is an advantage.
But there's a reality to it, Jeff. The reality is these kids have to get into school and their transcript is one of the primary factors that will get them into school. And when the college admissions council sees AP, that gets extra points.
I'm not saying, it wouldn't say AP.
But they're already accepted into college in most cases. So putting an asterisk wouldn't do any good, other than alert the college that maybe they shouldn't be giving them extra credit for AP. That's all I'm saying. It's putting our kids at a disadvantage.
I know what you're saying. I think the incentives are, are, are wrong, but another issue.
Oh, I do too.
Putting, putting that aside, let me be clear. The two, the two or three, I guess, art, AP, our portfolios, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So everything else, even US History Seven, is a separate class and a separate teacher?
Correct, one of their six teaching periods, correct.
One of their six teaching periods. I was fascinated, as I, as I said earlier, to find that we're flipping two courses.
Correct.
What would happen if we flipped an AP? And made, I know this has implications and I'm not, haven't thought about all the implications. But basically, it was a self-study with access to a teacher, obviously, as needed, as long as the enrollment was less than X. Because I'm uncomfortable denying access to AP, but I'm also uncomfortable spending a large amount of money in these difficult times for a course that's benefiting such a small number of people.
Right, and I would argue that on the other end of the extreme, we're doing the, the same thing. With students with IEPs and things of that nature. And I'm also, again, I, I want to reiterate, I am probably the only school in the district that students have other options that will not cost the families money.
I completely understand and I completely concur that you cannot remove access to AP. That would be a huge disadvantage for the school. Completely agree. But if flipping is in fact something that students enjoy, it may be actually something that would be a marketing asset as compared to a detriment.
Right, and I know this year, Jan's done a great job with the E2020, which is our online venue.
Right.
And there are some opportunities there as well. Four courses that, you know, we look at and as you said, it's, there's X number of students that are interested in it. That's another opportunity as, as we move forward as well. So to try and keep that, you know, ratio in double digits anyway.
I mean, I, I look at statistics, for example, or the, the two economics courses. They're incredibly valuable, real life skills. And yet, the data says they're not learning. And that's really, that's really unfortunate. And it would seem to me that if you made it an online course or a video course or something where they actually went home to learn it, as compared to learn it in the class, anything that disrupts the status quo, which isn't working. So I, I think we need to be creative and at the same time be very conscious of the fact that we need to have these programs to market your school. So I'm just, I guess I'm saying, put your create, create outside.
We're thinking outside the box. We've got, you know, we've got some things in the works. And again, we have been, although I won't say we've been assured, we've been, we've been given some good information that the MMSI grant is going to be part of our, we're going to be part of Cohort Five. We're going through the application process at this point in time. And we're confident that with that extra support, extra funding, extra professional development, if these courses don't have the numbers, you know, we'll, we'll look at something like an online venue.
I guess what I'm saying is a year from now, if these scores aren't any better, I at least want you to have tried something different.
Definitely.
Okay. Cindy, I know you had some thoughts?
I currently take three AP courses and
Good for you.
All of the teachers are very, very helpful. But I also enroll for two other courses at Bridgewater. So I go to Bridgewater after school and I take two more classes there. So just before this, I was at Bridgewater taking my sociology class. And I can tell you that last year when I took US History, it was much more vigorous than my sociology class right now. Much more. No, but I'm...
Oh, that laughter was not, to in any way disagree with you. It's, I'm really glad to hear it. But go ahead.
But these courses are very vigorous and they prepare you for college, like Ms. Freitas said. And like the micro and macroeconomics that I'm taking right now, the, the teacher who's running it, he's willing to stay after, work with you and everything like that. And I do understand economics to the point that he's teaching it. And I just think that because it's such a big test, it's so cumulative at the end of the year. And many people who take these tests are taking multiple tests instead of just one. So at the end of the year, I'm taking four tests in the span of one week. So that can be very vigorous, so I feel like that might affect the score somewhat.
I hear you and I applaud what you're doing in, in it completely. But the fact remains is that across the state, kids are doing much better. So somehow, the, the rigor that you're describing, I suspect, is in other classrooms. And the fact that some students are doing as much work as you are doing is probably true across the state as well. Not that I don't applaud you for doing it. And somehow, they're getting three pluses in general and we're getting ones and twos. And that's what has to concern this committee.
I would also like to interject something?
Excuse me, for one second. Did point out that one of the places we're at a disadvantage is that extra time is given in these other schools across the state. That they pay people to come in on a Saturday to offer tutoring sessions for students.
Actually, he wasn't that specific, that's interesting.
All right, and that's one of the things, the reason we've been going after this grant for two years, is that it would help pay for that service. So it isn't that our students are not as smart or that our teachers are not teaching. It is that they don't have the amount of time that is offered by some of these other programs, as well as some of the double-bought classes.
I mean, you could be anywhere from, you know, fifty to seventy-five extra hours, these other students are, are...
Free Saturday tutoring is coming.
Required free Saturday tutoring.
Not free, the cost is costly.
No, no, I, I mean, free to the students.
Free to the students, that's correct, there's a cost.
Yeah, of course there's a cost, absolutely.
But it's free and there's a...
So the required extra ti, the extra time is required and free to the families.
Correct.
Wow. Cliff?
I just hope that wouldn't be the cause of death to the AP program. If they're, if you're required to go and say, yeah, I understand.
I know what you're saying. They're very cautious with those times, as you know, that, that, you know, like Cindy...
That's just a, that's just a point, that's the first thing that popped in my head. You know, if kids have to go to school on Saturdays, I don't want to do that, I'll take honors.
It doesn't have to be Saturdays.
Right, well, whatever, right.
They work with the schools to design, you know, what time is efficient and do it... They work with the schools to design, you know, what time is efficient and doable for the students.
And cost effective.
And the teachers.
Here's another food for thought, and I know I've talked to you about this before. Have you ever considered the, you ever considered the possibility now that you've gone blocked to a ten credit course?
We looked, actually, it's funny you should say that, Debbie, you remember.
Because if you have a ten credit course, it leaves your extra time.
We started, and Cindy, I'm not sure if you took an AP last year, but we started the schedule with the ten credit model. And two things happened. I had, as we get, as we started the process, and again, it's a student-driven process, I had about twelve parents in because their child couldn't get into an AP course.
Yes, it cuts back on their options.
So that was one issue, and the other issue was that I was losing one-sixth of an extra teaching slot for other courses and it took my class size and just skewed it.
Absolutely, that's where you have to look at the law of diminishing returns.
Right.
But I'm just saying, you could consider that as maybe a strategy to offer a ten credit course in some of the areas. And the other thing too is, what percent, and maybe you could do this in the future with an asterisk or something. What percent of these kids are taking multiple tests? Like Cindy says she took, she's taken two APs, three APs? Three? Okay, in my school, you couldn't take three without permission.
Right.
You could only take two. You had to get permission, the principal would take three.
Right.
So, because it is demanding, and that kinda put it fair across the board.
It's a high percentage.
High percentage that.
They're taking multiple tests.
I would say about half.
Right.
That's high.
So that's kinda, that's kinda why you ran into that buzzsaw when you suggested the ten credits. But the point is that I honestly think, I really, really honestly think the three APs is too much. It's too much. And there has to be a really, 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 really sound academic and social reason for kids to be allowed to take three APs. That's just my, again, my bias. But ten credit courses.
We did try.
That would go a long way in solving your problem.
Definitely gave it an effort.
But I know it's a staff problem.
Double edged sword and it was, we tried, you know, we let, as you know, the public school system, we let that drive, once the students made their request, we allowed that to drive the schedule and it really skewed our class size. And again, there were so many kids that just couldn't get into the AP courses or the honors courses or that one accounting course that we had.
Because they're all singletons too.
Right, and so there were courses that they, you know, they wanted to go in, they wanted to go into business, they wanted that accounting course. It was tough and we made the decision that it wasn't what was best for our kids at that time.
SATs.
Thank you. Okay, I know you have the data in front of you. I put something new that the College Board came up with last year and, you know, just one year was worth of data. I didn't think it was worthwhile for last year, but I did include it. It broke down the state and the public schools within the state. As we did last year, we also gave you the national average. And for critical reading, we were at a four fifty-nine for this year. Critical writing a four fifty-two and for the math, we were at a four sixty-six. In regards to this year, we've always, and I wanna ask a, you know, I'm interested in the philosophy of the school committee because my philosophy has always been to push the kids to take the SAT and I think my guidance department has done a good job with that and I've heard both sides of the argument, but I definitely, if I can ask the question, would like to get your pulse on the philosophy of SATs because seventy-four percent of our seniors took the SATs last year and that's the highest number we've had in recent years. And as my math department head said, if you took five or six of those kids that probably are looking at a community college and weren't involved, our numbers would be substantially higher. But that's, my philosophy is push the kids to take these exams. So those are the percentage of students that took the exam. And I definitely would answer some questions at this point in time.
Mike? You don't wanna tell the principal what your philosophy is about SATs?
No, that sounds, yeah, I mean, if they're taking academic level courses, then yeah, I mean, that's kinda the point. Unless they're gonna go to a vocational school, you'd want them to take the SATs. Coming from someone who's never taken an SAT.
Thank you.
Cliff?
No, I think that his philosophy is right on and I would work to even get the seventy-six even higher. We have to push our kids and we have to convince them the importance of post-secondary education. And if they have to start at the community level, then, I mean, the community college, that's fine. But I just was, I was reading today an article, I forgot what magazine it was, it was about all the remediation that community colleges are doing and they're complaining like crazy about all the remediation they're doing and of course pointing their fingers at the high schools and then upper, and then the high schools are pointing their fingers at the middle school and then the middle schools pointing their fingers at the elementary schools and away we go. But no, we want to have high expectations for all our students, so no, I don't have a problem with that at all. If anything, keep working and get it up into the eighties.
Thank you.
And you're hovering around state average for public schools in the language odds. You still got a way to go in math, but we're working on it.
And SAT, yes.
SATs?
You all set, Cliff?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Yeah, I mean, when I look at the scores across the board, we went down, so of course that's a concern and, you know, it's great that, you know, we went up two percentage points when it comes to the students that are taking it and I agree with other colleagues of mine that I want everybody to aspire to be the greatest that they can be. And for a lot of those people, being able to take the SATs and aspire to go to college, that's the way to do it. The concern that I have is that we went up by two percentage points, but the percentage that we went down across the board, is there any?
It's also two percent ironically.
Is it?
Yes.
But I just, I can't, it's very difficult to make the correlation that we've pushed underperforming students to take a course and it's just dipping everyone down. I mean, is, are there any other things that you've seen over the last year that could cause the dips that we're seeing? I mean, we're just, we're going down every single year.
Right, and I don't know if it's the cause, but one thing that you may remember a few years ago, I really wanted to push for was the SAT prep program as a requirement for all juniors. And unfortunately, we didn't have the staffing to be able to support that. But I know that that's something that we do off of one section right now. And when you look at those kids in particular, although you don't really have a baseline, so to speak, but they do score statistically higher than the kids that aren't in those programs. And I'd love to be in a position next year to have an SAT prep program. But in regards to what has changed, you know, we're really working with the College Board and with the department heads to really come up with that and to try and dig down into that data. But, you know, from last year to this year, what happened? Chris is here because she's involved in that research and, you know, we're looking into that, trying to figure out exactly what do we need to do from a curriculum standpoint. She's made some modifications this year, but it's gonna take a whole year to figure out if those things are working. And we know that the junior, some of the things that she's done and some of the things that Mike has done in the ELA department, we'll see the, hopefully the fruits of those labors a year from now.
I know one of the things that you said was that, you know, for several of our students, they had to go back to study halls. I mean, are there other things that we're doing that I know is not the, you know, the cost as well as the teacher time that goes into SAT prep, but are there alternative ways that we can provide information to students that are SAT prep-like, you know, workbooks or being able to download things online or just that constant push that during the free time, that this is something that really you can do?
Definitely, the whole, this year, we went with the E2020 for the SAT prep. So what that did, instead of us going through Princeton review type program and paying extra, we grouped that in with our online program with Jan, and that's actually the venue that we're using this year is the E2020. So during that period, we have almost every license being used when that class is in session. And that's for the district, that's not just for the high school. And so that is an option. There are some kids that are taking advantage of that. But I'd love to, again, have that as a, you know, requirement with the option for certain kids that you could waive. You know, if they're, you know, they're taking those three or four AP courses, maybe they can't fit into their schedule. Or kids that maybe said, you know, I'm gonna go into vocational training, it's not a requirement. But for the most part, to try and make that a requirement. It's a great course.
Yeah, because I just don't want it to be about the percentage of students taking AP courses or the percentage of students that are taking the SAT. It's about what we're, you know, what I think Chairman Swift was saying is, what is that bar, like setting it more than you're just there and you're taking it, great, you know, we're happy to have you part of our team, but basically setting what that expectation is, you know, whether it's SAPs or SATs or AP courses. That if you're going to do it, then this is really what you need to achieve. Like saying it hand in hand, yes, take it, but then also take it, but here's where the benchmark is. You know, a three or above on AP, you know, tests or SAT scores, this is what to strive and I'm sure you're doing that. But it's just, you know, just being able to say it out loud is, I felt it was important for me to say that. It's just that to, because I, you know, tonight I just did hear about, a lot about how we, you know, increasing the number of students that are in these, but it doesn't, it doesn't fulfill that student experience if they're also not getting exactly what is expected out of them.
Sure, definitely.
Thanks.
I will also just say that these tests are time tests. And some students may have the knowledge, as you so pointed out, as one of our students pointed out, that we are getting the knowledge, they're passing the courses, they are getting the higher level of instruction. They are being challenged more. I don't think the learning isn't taking place. I think that the structure of the time tests is a little bit of a deterrent. We have the MCAS, we've been focusing on those types of skills that are getting our students to perform well at the high school level. And I think you've seen some results of that. Certainly in ELA, math is coming up, our science is coming up. The changes in the curriculum now, especially with the literacy across the curriculum in regards to Common Core, we're seeing more informational texts being infused into the curriculum in grade nine, in grade 10. So again, I mean, we're hoping and planning on that these changes in the curriculum will surface in these types of tests. The MCAS writing is very different and the demands are very different from that and the SAT writing or the AP writing. The type of responses that they, the students need to, the type of questions the students need to respond to are much more focused, again, in this informational text. And again, we're hoping to see those changes on the testing with the change in the curriculum that we're revising this year and will continue to revise and implement in the classrooms. So I think as new PRC assessments come about, and the PRC assessments are, you're gonna see are aligned more closely with the type of questioning, the critical thinking and the type of writing and the open responses that you will find on the SAT and on the AP testing, I think you will see those incremental changes in the future. The other thing I would say again, with our SAT and our AP, we are trying to expose our kids to higher levels of learning. And as an educator, I don't think it's all about, I don't think it's all about the numbers in regards to these, what you're saying here. I think it's what happens in the classroom, what we're exposing our kids to and how we're preparing them for college and getting them ready for that. So I'd like us to keep that in mind as well.
The simple, short answer is yes, I want more and more kids to take the SAT.
Thank you.
Not because I think the SAT per se is particularly meaningful. You have a bad day, but you can take it multiple times. It's still just a number and some people take tests better than others, but it's a means to an end. The biggest favor you could do for kids is try and eliminate the disconnect, and this is a national disconnect, the disconnect between their notion of what it takes from an educational attainment perspective to actually achieve their lifestyle goals. The failure of this country has been, literally, our educational attainment has been slipping for decades and the rest of the world is catching up and where it's like, what happened? So somehow we have to eliminate that disconnect and get kids to realize, I suspect, from how hard Cindy's working, she's not someone who's being, is disconnected, but Cindy's not the average. Right?
Definitely.
But the average kid seems to think that if they graduate from high school, they have a shot. The answer is, they don't have a shot. It's hopeless. If they graduate from college without any skills, they probably don't have a shot either anymore. But they don't know that and not enough people are telling them that. So the biggest favor you can do is, for them is to say, not only take your SAT, but figure out what you wanna do and figure out how to get there and make sure that when you get there, you're not surprised by how hard it is to get there and how much, how many people you're competing with for that thing that you want. It's, you have a huge, huge task, but SAT is a tiny little piece of it, but it's still important.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just thought of one thing and I don't know, I think Ron asked the question, you know, what are some of the reasons, can you come up with that? And I can give you three very important reasons that would affect the improvement across the board, whether you're talking about MCAS or APs or SATs or wherever. And we've talked about it up here, but we can't lose sight of it because I've got three very talented administrators here. I've got Chris as a department head and I've got an assistant principal that's incredible and I've got a really energetic new principal. And I don't wanna disillusion them because there are three things working against you. You guys are in an uphill battle, all right? And it's not because you don't care about kids and it's not because you don't have faith in kids, but you have three elements that are working against you and they've been working against you for quite a while. One of them is school choice. One of them is school choice. We're losing kids, all right? So that's working against you. That would affect, and it would be ridiculous for me to think that it's not gonna affect scores, because it is. Secondly, you're losing some kids to private schools. The number of kids going to private schools has increased. Private schools or charter schools has increased, all right? That's got to have an impact on test scores, as you all know. The one that really concerns me, and I don't know if this statistic is true, but I suspect that it is, that the overwhelming majority, the overwhelming majority of the eighth graders that went to the vocational school were on the honor roll.
Definitely, those are three.
Those are three variables that virtually you have no control over.
Right, and we don't wanna sit there and make excuses.
No, but I'm, I'll make, I'll make the excuse. You know, the bottom line is that this is gonna, this has got to affect test scores.
Sure.
I mean, you can't, you can't, you can't have any kind of reasonable expectation to think that when you, when you take in, you know, top-level students, for whatever reason, out of our, out of our equation, that it's not gonna affect the bottom line, because it is. And I just wanted to make that point.
Well, you forgot the fourth and that is.
What was the fourth? I forgot one.
The fourth is that.
Oh, we don't have any money?
Upper Cape spends almost twice as much per child. And while money isn't the be all and end all, it, from a parent's perspective, when they see one community saying twice as much for this school and no to fix the roof on this school, it has to send a message to parents that care.
Right, but I just didn't want these very talented administrators to feel that, you know, we don't understand, you know, the big picture, because we do.
Which is unfortunately a segue into NIESC.
Great, it was a good segue.
Now, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this. I ask that this letter be shared with you for obvious reasons. And I ask that Scott be here to answer any questions about his letter to the NIESC authorities and the, and the impact of the budget cuts primarily. So this is really our time to ask Scott if we have any questions, concerns, comments about the letter that he wrote. Mike?
Thank you. Bottom paragraph, page one.
Yes.
What caught my attention, it says, "The losses in teaching staff consist of 1.5 career and technology education teacher and one," and that was like the numeric 1.5 and now it says, and then 1.5.
What?
Social studies teacher.
Correct.
So for a full-time equivalent of two?
That would put it at two, correct.
I thought we lost six teachers at the, six positions at the high school.
Right, and what we were able to do is, and I think it goes on and I'll cite the page. On page three, the second to last paragraph, it will show that we were able. On page three, the second to last paragraph, it will show that we were able to cut, we had to cut $38,000 from the school's athletic budget and that brought back one teacher. We were also able to, if you, I, I believe you were updated on the situation with our athletic director.
Yes.
We basically took that position, took the funding for that position and hired back another teacher and a half.
So that's four and a half teachers.
Actually, I'm sorry, it ended, it ended up being two teachers with a school to career person. So it was a 1.5, it was a one and then 2.5, so it brought it up to two. And then I think there's, there's still a department head listed in there as well that was in charge of guidance.
Okay, thank you.
So some of the cuts were, some of the positions were attrition?
Some of the, yes, the 0.5 history, I guess you would call attrition. But the 1.5 business were not.
No, unfortunately.
Ron?
Well, I just got all love and fuzzy after I read this letter. Just made me.
Warm and fuzzy? Okay. Really?
Meaning that, I mean
That's, that's for the sarcastic font on your computer?
What I meant is, reading this letter and I know we have to send it and we have to give them any substantial changes, what are we, what are we expecting back from them? I mean, what is the next step?
I'm, I don't know, maybe I'm too optimistic, as Cliff said, but I'm, I'm not thinking, I'm thinking at this point that we're not going to see a change in our accreditation. I am very confident we will not be on probation and I believe we'll stay at the warning status that we're at.
So I think, I know that it's very factual, it's going into detail exactly what was done and the concerns are. I know that there were also some positive, sorry, some positives that, or things that the school has done to make up for, you know, some of the losses and there was no thought about putting any positive notes in this at all? Or is it really just?
That's not what it's for.
It's for changes.
It's a very specific format that you have to follow for this letter. And there are certain guidelines that we have to follow. And it is a substantive change report that affects this school negatively. It's, it's not the type of letter that you are
That you do smoke and mirrors or anything and that, that's not what I'm asking.
No.
Just being able to show a true picture of, you know, yes, absolutely, the negative changes that needed to be made, but I just know that there's
This, this letter is significantly different than the one that was ready to go at the end of July. As I said, when Mr. Flaherty made the comment about the staffing, we were lucky, we were able to be creative and think outside the box because there's no doubt in my mind, the letter that was going to go out at the end of July would have put us on probation. We were lucky enough to be able to make these changes because we did have our athletic director moved on to Plymouth South and that created an opportunity for us to get this back to where it can be somewhat palatable. But the issue still remains at the end of this school year. I don't have really an athletic director. I've asked, I've asked the dean of students to take on the role of athletic director to get us through this year. And so that's, that's why we were able to make this look as positive as I, I think it does.
Okay, thank you.
To get back to your question, this report, we are hopeful that it will not change our status at this point in time. But the next step is we need to submit a report in February. And that is for our highlighted recommendations, if you remember that presentation that we did a few months back. And the results of our progress on meeting those recommendations and what our actions are and either, either we've met them or what we are doing to meet them, that will be probably more crucial than this letter.
And I would say it would be more positive than this letter as well, because of some of the changes we either have made or will make.
Are there concerns going into that February report that that would change our status?
I think it's too premature to really comment on that, but just keep in mind that I believe it was more than two-thirds require a funding source, two-thirds of the recommendations. But I'd rather report on that in January when we have a little more time to meet with the staff and to really work on that two-year follow-up report.
Thanks.
Cliff?
I, I think that the most important thing that we've got to consider here is the fact that I think after Tom, I, I'm hopeful after Tom meeting in October, one of those big hurdles that, that you reported will be taken care of. But other than that, as you said, two-thirds of this are money items. And you, we're not going to be able to put a positive spin on that. And the most important thing that I think that you can do is just be honest and just tell it like it is. But I think that you're right, those things that were not money items will be positives in that, in that February report. And, but do I think it's going to get us off probation? I don't.
Off warning?
Off warning, I meant. No, that's what I meant. Do I think it's going to get us off warning?
Right. And it, you know, there is the, the five-year process to do that. So we're hopeful that, you know, if we, if we stick with the five-year plan and we, and we kind of just take this one year at a time and, and get some of these recommendations taken care of and, you know, they can't all be the ones that are, that are low-lying fruit. Some of these are going to require some funding and if we do a little bit each year, hopefully we'll be in a position to have met all the recommendations.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a concern that I think you can help me with. And that is, my sense from my interactions with students is that they're far more concerned about this than you might think. Or maybe you're already very aware.
Well, I think the petition itself definitely speaks volumes for their concern and
Well, that, that's true.
And the, and certainly we've, Debbie and myself have fielded many calls from students worried about accreditation. And these are, and these are our, our best and our brightest for the most part.
Of course they are, yes.
So, you know, definitely, we know it's, it's on their radar. And again, I want to stress because there seems to be people that go from probation to warning and vice versa. You know, it's warning and, and I believe when we last looked, there were over a hundred schools on that warning in the state. So it's, it's, it's something that, you know, that people need to work through, but we definitely need the support from the, the community to get some of these things taken care of.
Oh, I understand that completely. I understand completely and I, and I guess, but I guess what I'm saying is when you've got, try to keep the rumors to a minimum. Try to keep, if there's good news, share it with the student council, for example, because
With the school council?
Excuse me?
School council?
Yeah, well, absolutely. I said student council.
Student council too, okay.
Yeah, both.
Yes.
Both, because I think we, to the extent that we can avoid it, we don't, we want them worrying about education and not worrying about accreditation, even though I understand why they are. Anything else?
Just one point.
Yes.
The only thing that, Scott, this, this letter is excellent, it's very well-written and, no, I mean, it's, it's, it's excellent. The only thing that probably I would have added to this, and I think it's important, and it's too late, it's all water under the dam, but I would have added a paragraph on some of the initiatives that we tried. We had a very extensive override package out there that failed.
Right.
And, and I think that was worthy of mentioning in this letter. I mean, I mean, a paragraph dedicated to it, you didn't mention it.
All right, I was going to say, I believe you mentioned it.
But I mean, in terms of what exactly those overrides would have meant, you know, just to highlight that as opposed to, you know, just mentioning the fact that there was an override or whatever. That would be the only thing that I would have said, because it puts, it, it highlights a really, really important strategy that was out there that got rejected.
Right.
That would have mitigated many of these recommendations, particularly the staffing.
I think, Dr. Sylvia, that in the report that we will file in February, and again, the report that we will file next October, will be the, the time and the place to talk about some of the initiatives that we have put in place and, and in terms of explaining our progress or a lack thereof. And I, I definitely, that is the time for us to do that.
But I do think that the fact that these initiatives failed, all right, made it, made it necessary for you to write several aspects of this letter.
Definitely. I think almost every, almost everyone, yeah, when you look at it.
And it would just, you know, it would just highlight that for them, that, you know, we really did try and we were out there pounding doors, you know, making, making our case and it just didn't work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Scott, Debbie, Chris, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I want to thank Chris and Debbie, they were the co-chairs, as you remember, for the NIESC visitation, which ironically was exactly a year ago. So I want to thank them for that and they continue to serve in many capacities with the NIESC follow-up. Thank you.
Class size report?
Yes, in your package, you will see the class size report for the 2012-13 school year. In particular, if we look at the Minehead Forest side on the first page, you will see that in third grade, we have 25.2 student average, 25 as an average in grade four and 26.3 in grade five. We were able to add two teachers back into Deccus, which has kept class sizes reasonable. We do have 22 children at grade three and 21.4 at grade two. But those numbers where they're over 25 are the ones that I'm most concerned with. And as I stated earlier, if you take a look to the right, you'll see the enrollments. So that you can see currently in elementary, we have, between the two buildings, 1,337 students, where we have 659 students in the middle school and we have 628 students at Wareham High School. And that the overall number in the system is now at 2,863, down from close to 3,000. We were a little bit under 3,000. And I, the next two pages, average class sizes at both the middle school and then the high school, you can see that the sizes have gone up a little bit at the middle school, but they are acceptable. The high school actually has some very good class sizes, but remember, these are averages and you saw those AP classes, when you add those in, it will skew some of these averages. At a later date, if the committee wants, for information, I can get you lists of all the courses and all the number of children in each course.
I would like that.
Yes.
I would definitely like that, if you could do a printout, for both the middle school and the high school.
Will do. Last page, I think, is most informative. Wareham students attending outside the district. It shows you that since 11, so we have January 1st, 11, January 1st, 12, because that's when we normally do this report. It's called school sending report. And then we did it again just at the beginning of this year. So we will give you this page again after we do it again in January, just to make sure the numbers are what you see here. But school choice, students that we've lost to this district went from 31 year to 48 and then this year we're at 52. Homeschool students actually have stayed pretty much the same, it's down a little bit, but nothing really to mention. Charter schools have stayed about the same, we're up two from last January, but only one from the year before. Occupational ed, there are two more students attending Bristol Agricultural School. Remember that costs us $18,000 per child out of our budget. That's part of the 9,000 accounts when we have tuitions. So, and then Upper Cape, these are the total number of children from Wareham attending Upper Cape. So 216, January 11, 215, January 12. But this fall, October 12, we have 237 students showing an increase. Again, we'll show that in January and see if those students, because historically, when we've had some students that either changed their mind or got themselves into some disciplinary issues, they are asked to leave and to go back to their district schools. And that also happens from parochial schools and other private schools as well. But these are the numbers and I think they talk about what Dr. Sylvia talked about, the competition that the high school is facing and how we really need to shore up our programs. This one probably doesn't show it, but the, the one in January does, I believe.
I just asked
Parochial schools.
Where does it, the parochial school?
Not in here, it's January, I get all that information.
Okay.
I mentioned it earlier.
So these numbers will go up, because the parochial schools are not in, so the number of students that are going?
Parochial is not accounted in this, it's a January 1st report that gets parochial school.
Yes, but it's, it's not a huge number.
And it's pretty consistent, if I recall.
It, it is.
One, one of the things to keep in mind in looking at these numbers, which, which is neither good news nor bad news, it just is. And that is, at our peak, which was about the early 2000s, we're about 35, 3600 students. Even if you added back every single student that is going to some other place, we don't come close to getting back to the peak, which tells you we've literally simply had population declines, demographic changes, which is true for Massachusetts in general and it's true for Wareham. So the Cape is going through this sort of thing as well, even more so. So yes, we'd like to have, and, and by the way, Upper Cape was up here, went down and now it's coming back up. So 237 is not an unusually high number for Upper Cape. So although every time we lose, every time we lose a, a, a student from eighth to ninth that Scott wishes he could keep, it's in fact, the numbers aren't dramatic, although it is true that they tend to be the great kids because Upper Cape knows what they're doing when they're picking their kids. Anyway, sorry.
Demographically, it's different at Upper Cape. In other words, the numbers are the same.
Oh, oh.
But they're kind of different kids.
Yes, and the reason for that is because Upper Cape suddenly started to get concerned about MCAS scores and a lot of other things and they were allowed to do something that, I should bite my tongue, so I will. Anyway, go ahead. Mike, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, more of an observation. Doctor, the, as you pointed out, the, the Minehead figures are, are, are high. And I, and I think it was probably during the public hearing when you first presented, you know, that you forecasted the numbers and they were going to be very high at Deccus. And we've got two other teachers there to bring that down, I think particularly in fifth grade.
That's correct.
But, but now, I mean, is, is Minehead kind of taking it on the chin now or what? I mean
Minehead took it on the chin two ways. One is part of the overall cut that needed to reduce by $2 million. They lost that assistant principals position that made running Hammond next to impossible. By closing Hammond, that now, there are no classrooms available for, even if we had a teacher, to give them. Which talks about the whole look at the district for space needs that we really need to come up with a solution before next year, so that if, we have room if we have some funding.
It kind of brings me to another point, I mean, looking at the, the kids that are going out of district, I mean, what if these kids ever wanted to come back? I mean, is there even a room for them?
At, at the middle school and high school, we have the room for them, yes.
Well, the school choice, I mean, how, how many of those kids are elementary?
Again, we'd have to break that down, there's another report that we Again, we'd have to break that down, there's another report that we do later that does do that.
My sense is a distinct minority.
Yeah, I would say that too, but not so with parochial, I think parochial might be a little bit higher.
Michelle shaking her head.
In terms, in terms of choice.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I'd expect.
There are some, but not.
But, but, right, the parochial would be a different story.
Right.
That goes across the board, it's all grades for parochial.
And, and we'll, we'll get a report on that soon?
Yeah, um, January is when that's done.
January? So, we, we track that, or, because we have kids in the, in, in our district, but we just have to know where they are, I guess.
That, that's correct. We, what happens, we have to elicit the schools to send us the information. Michelle, Michelle sends out all kinds of questions and calls and so forth to get the data.
Okay, thank you.
Rhonda?
It was one of my questions, that you're continuing to do the survey, um, of the reason why also?
Um, we did that last year, or the year before, I think, um, you know, we have not done it this year.
I think if, if it doesn't, you know, tax you too much, but I know that, it was one of the reports that I saw last year, and it was, there was a lot of great information in there, where we actually asked the parents different questions on the reason why they...
Question, are we getting the answer from the parents, or are we getting the answer from the schools?
No, 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 the parents, we actually sent home a survey to the parents of everybody who was sending their child someplace else.
Okay.
And asked them very pointed questions on the reason why. The other question I have is, you know, I was at the, uh, Minnet, uh, school, uh...
Council.
The, what?
Council.
Thank you, I'm seriously, I'm getting sick.
She's sick, yes. Could you infect?
Yeah, that's fine, I'll move over, I'll go sit on the audience. One of the things that was brought up, though, was, you know, the same thing, that there are three more teachers at Deccus than Minnet, and the question that I brought up was, uh, when these, these decisions were made, and, you know, they did say that there's just not another teacher available to bring another teacher over to Minnet, but, uh, the thought of, looking at redistricting, so looking at, uh, some of the students and seeing if there was any way that we could redistrict, just to even that out a little bit?
Deccus is full to the gills as well. I mean, redistricting is difficult on occasion, because it's done by a bus route and particular stops, and what normally happens is you may get, you know, it, it depends on what grades the children are, and it is not an easy thing to accomplish without upsetting a number of parents.
Just to be clear, you may have stated, these are all full-day kindergarten, correct?
That is correct.
How's that program going?
Excellent.
Yeah?
But there are, one of the things that I heard today, which was great, was that, because we allowed, um, we offered the, um, half-day kindergarten program, um, seven, correct me if I'm wrong, but seven parents took, um, half-day.
The, the opt-out, the opt-out.
Yeah, the opt-out, um, to half-day, and within a couple weeks, it's down to two now. So, there's only two parents now that are doing the, um, doing the half-day.
That's interesting. They didn't want to pick them up at the, in the middle of the day, or they...
The kids wanted to stay.
They'd like to, right, the other kids, it looked like they, they were safe, and they were having a good time, and they wanted to sit at their friends.
Well, that's good news, I like that, I like to hear that. Cliff, any questions?
Nope, I'm set.
Okay. Financial reports, and Anna is suffering, so I guess that means...
That's absolutely correct. So, um, unlike Anna, there is no PowerPoint presentation, um, and...
Oh gee.
I will answer, um, questions, I'd first like to look at the, uh, function summary, and what I normally do when I do this is I go to the last page, and I look at the, the bottom line, and percent remaining, um, this year is eighty-four point six, last year at this time was eighty-three point seven, which means we're in a little better position at this moment. Does not mean that it's gonna stay that way, 'cause the heating season hasn't started, but i- it is an indicator. So, in going through all these accounts and checking, uh, the ones that, you know, don't match up, um, there's nothing in here that necessarily gives me, um, something to worry about at this particular time, but I'll answer any questions that people might have.
Any members worried?
I like Anna's presentation better.
Yeah, Anna's presentation is much more complete.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll discuss this on the twenty-third.
Poor Anna.
Cliff, you worried about anything?
Nope.
There was one...
Well, I'm worried about a lot of things, but not on the report.
There was one category that was amazingly short after such a short period of time, but the PDF didn't allow me to mark it, so excuse me while I quickly see if I can find it, I think it was something, instruction, uh, was down to about five percent, you probably already know which one I'm talking about.
Well, I looked at the, um, out of the curriculum director's office, which was off about seven percent, um, and that has to do with the fact that we transferred secretaries that were at, um, a different amount of time. So, we moved somebody out of that office and somebody into that office, and so, that's why we have a difference of seven percent there.
No, it was much more dramatic than that. But if I, I'm sure there's some...
How about instructional other, twenty-four fifteen?
That was it, that was it, thank you. Instructional other, it's only less than ten percent left, and we're only in the end of, middle of October.
As you're all aware, we had a debt exclusion that put all of our textbooks and technology out there, we didn't get it, so we zeroed all those accounts, and this is where people have, um, gone to buy materials that they needed, instructional materials, so since we had no money in textbooks, they've used this account for what they needed to make sure we had instructional material for children. Mike's got a question.
Go ahead. Just, well, I mean, if you weren't using them for...
I thought I still had the floor.
Well, you did, but...
Go ahead.
If you weren't using them for, for the textbooks now, what, what would you use them for, what was it intended for?
Instructional other, um, can be used for workbooks, um, software, it can be used for manipulatives, it is material that is used in classrooms to instruct. Textbooks is normally the one above it, um, that we have no money in.
Yeah, which, which code is this one now, the, the number?
Twenty-four fifteen.
Bottom of page, uh, middle of page two, sort of. Actually, more like the bottom. So, it, it does beg the question that presumably you had plans for this, and now those plans have to be aborted because they've been used for other things.
People buy what they need in the summertime to have them ready for when school starts. Then along the year, there may become other needs that we now won't be able, you know, somebody loses the book you gave them, or the material, and you need to buy more, somebody else moves into the district. We won't have that, we don't have the flexibility, because we had to use what we had.
Anna says no earlier, is the bottom line.
That's, yes, unfortunately.
Okay, anything else on the, on the function summary? Okay, moving on to revolvers.
I'm available for any questions that people might have.
Yes, Mike?
Just real quick, it may or may not be reflected here yet, but, um, how did we make out with the insurance for the lightning hit at the West Wareham Academy?
I think we said that that cost was about eight hundred and fifty dollars, I thought, and insurance has a thousand-dollar limit, so that we couldn't get anything back.
What did we think it was to begin with, I know it came way under, um, do you remember?
Oh, I thought maybe we thought it was a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
But it was the work, I think that, I think it was the fire panel that we were talking about.
Anything else on revolvers? I see the transportation is slowly building, which is emphasis on the word slowly.
And, um, we were able to, um, purchase some used vehicles, so we haven't, we, out of the sixty, we, we plan on encumbering all sixty this year, but we've encumbered twenty-four nine 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 at this time that we've spent.
Okay.
So, this is above that number.
Right, okay, so, what you're, and just, just to repeat what our transportation manager said, um, he now has those two used vans, is that correct?
Correct.
And his emphasis now, for anything that becomes available, will be on large seventy-seven regular buses, um, and let's hope that it becomes available. We still have some opportunity potentially to have, um, to be able to use the remaining thirty-five thousand, if the McKinny Vento money comes through, both at town meeting, I shouldn't say both at town meeting, it'll come through from the state, it's just a question of when, and, and hopefully town meeting will approve it. Anything else on revolvers? Rhonda?
The one question I had was about the full-day kindergarten, uh, will that, will we start seeing that number decline over time, seeing that there's less and less?
Y- yes, because there is no money coming into it.
Right, exactly.
Because we're not charging tuition.
I was just surprised that it's still up at that amount, that it hasn't gone down.
It's kind of a reimbursement thing, so in other words, we wait to spend the money in it until we have the money. So, right now, we have halftime paraprofessionals in every full-day kindergarten that are being paid out of this account. Unfortunately, once the money is gone from this account, that will have to be, will be budgeted in next year's LEA budget.
Okay, and you'll still keep this account open because of the preschool money coming in east?
Yes, that is correct, but we, um, keep that separate within the, uh, item. I don't know, I couldn't tell you the difference, how much is preschool and how much is kindergarten money at the moment, but I can if somebody wants me to.
Mr. Chair, before we go forward, we need to make a motion to go past the hour of ten.
How'd that happen? Thank you for reminding me, I'll take a motion to go back, pass the hour of ten by only a small amount, I believe.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, four zero zero, thank you very much. I think gifts?
No request for transfer.
Oh, sorry, request for transfers, yes, not unimportant.
So, um, the memo, um, that I've put together, actually Anna put it together for me, even though it's for me, um, thirty-eight thousand dollars, it shows you from those athletic, um, things, when the athletic director came in here, or we outlined, I believe, when we talked about where we were gonna get the money to hire additional staff. So, from and to, um, high school, uh, teacher salaries and high school para salaries are where the first thirty-eight thousand goes, and then the second fifty-one thousand goes into the Deccus teachers' salary line item. When we, when we get the additional, um, hundred and twenty et cetera number from, um, school choice, we'll be able to do another one, we'll come back and tell you where we're putting that money to pay for the remainder of these teachers, um, that we've hired, that we're currently paying out of choice. So, we needed that, we had enough money that we could do it, but it will get to zero unless we get that money and put it back in the account.
Just to be clear, this is consistent with a vote that we already took?
That is correct.
With respect to the budget?
Was that vote just like a non-binding, you know, like, direction, the, the one we took a while back, like August eighth?
I didn't think it was non-binding.
Well, no, I'm just, it's like, no, it looks like we're doing the same thing, it's...
Well, the, we're not doing the same thing in the sense that one was, um, operational, and this is financial, if you will.
Gotcha, all right.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Yes.
When we did discuss this, the, the, the number for Hammond was about fifty-six thousand dollars, so why is it fifty-one thousand dollars now?
I- it's fifty-one because, um, until the town votes to accept the building...
Yeah.
We have kept the heat at a particular temperature so that we don't have pipes freeze, there would be a, an expense for me to drain everything and mothball the building, so, which I would do if the town does not accept it.
So, so the cost of doing that is about five thousand dollars?
It, it may be a little bit less, whatever we don't, I will come back to you to transfer, but I needed to keep some money there in case.
All right, so, so if the town doesn't take the building, then we like put plywood up and, and...
Absolutely, great big X's.
Jeez, God, okay.
Anything else? Okay, um, we need a vote on this, yes?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you, now I think we're on to gifts.
Yeah, we're on to gifts. I recommend the acceptance of a cash donation of five hundred dollars from the Wareham Athletic Association Funds. Funds will be used to purchase supplies for the Global Education Community Dinner, that I forgot to announce, is Thursday evening at six PM at the Deccus Cafeteria, and that is to raise money for the students that are going to Cape Verde this spring, and so that's our first gift.
It's tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, four zero zero.
I recommend, um, all right, uh, Minnet Forest won a two-hundred-dollar gift card from Target through the Give with Target Gift Cards program, I recommend that we accept the note, donation of two-hundred-dollar gift card from Target for Minnet Forest.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, abstained, four zero zero.
And in the spirit of giving, Walmart called, and they are going to be giving ten fifty-dollar gift cards to Minnet Forest, and ten fifty-dollar gift cards to Deccus, and, um, to teachers, and so I've asked each principal to do a random drawing and pick ten teachers, and the assistant manager from, uh, Walmart will be coming to the schools, I believe, next Tuesday, and that's why this is on the agenda this evening.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, abstained, four zero zero. Thank you. Any other business that the committee would like to bring before us?
Just a reminder, Mr. Chair, that registration for NSBA was today, it started, opened, just in case we need to do that.
Okay, thank you. Where is it this year?
San Diego.
San Diego, where the weather's always beautiful.
Move adjourned?
Second.
Third.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.